Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. I'd like to call the city council meeting for December 21st if the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Alto.
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Lundell to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, public input. I see there's a couple people on public input that want to talk about COVID. It is part of our council business tonight, but if you want to talk for three minutes, we'll let you talk for three minutes in public input, too. Okay, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers must address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the apocal data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speaker shall not address the topics that are... should not address topics that are subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at that public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but make sure to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Eric?
Later tonight, this council is slated to vote on whether to impose its COVID policy or to rescind it. In the light of recent court rulings, this council may be feeling justified to move forward with a vote to keep it. I, however, continue to urge you to vote against... and, I'm sorry. I, however, continue to urge you to vote to rescind it on two points. One is the simple fact that doing so will almost certainly result in a weakening of the number of first responders able to respond to the citizens of Cannon Falls. And second, if you have never heard of the Nuremberg Code, I would greatly suggest you familiarize yourself with it before choosing to vote on this policy. Let me read to you part of Point 1 from this code. Quote, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion," end quote. Can you justify this mandate? Are the city's employees free from force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior forms of constraint or coercion? Take your vote tonight, and let it be the final one on this matter. There's no need to kick this can down the road anymore. You either know your position on this matter to be moral and legal, or you do not. But when you vote tonight, remember the Nuremberg Trials, and that no amount of "I was just following someone else's orders" will spare you. Americans are tired of tyrannical government overreach, and in the end, individual freedom will prevail. This is America, the land of the free.
Thank you.
Thank you. Becky?
I have handouts. I don't know.
Yeah?
I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no on any discriminatory COVID-19 policy that would require vaccination-free employees to test every two weeks and wear masks. First of all, I would like to thank you for coming up with a policy that does not require mandatory vaccination. I really appreciate that. I am not for or against vaccinations. I believe as a smart, unselfish, and loyal American citizen, it is up to us to be accountable and do our part to research the facts about what we are putting into our bodies. I would suggest that if you are going to require testing every two weeks and masks for vaccination-free employees, it is discrimination and should be considered for all employees if it's voted into effect. Statistics from the CDC show that the shot does not stop the transmission of the disease. The CDC link is listed as number one on the reference sheet that I gave you called "Did You Know?" Common sense says that if you are vaccinated, then you should have protection from the vaccine-free people you are around. However, according to our own CDC, this drug does not prevent infection or transmission. Our governor just got it today as a fully vaccinated, fully boosted family. Are you still going grocery shopping, the gas station, eating at restaurants, to the hardware store, to Sam's or Costco? Each one of us interact with many people throughout our day. According to the CDC, the contagiousness of vaccinated and vaccinated-free persons infected with COVID-19 is similar. The CDC link that you can find that information on is number two on your list. According to the CDC, and the FDA, COVID vaccines pose risks of myocarditis, blood clotting, neurological damage, and death. The link for your confirmation is number three on your resource. I've included a chart from the FDA listing, which is the second page, a working list of possible adverse event outcomes due to this experimental shot. Under the box list is another graphic of adverse events identified through December 3rd, 2021. Keep in mind that experts consider this number low, as many are not reported. There have been 946,461,000 adverse event reports from the shot, including almost 20,000 deaths and over 100,000 hospitalizations, including over 32,000 permanent disabilities. This number expands dramatically when you consider worldwide adverse effects. According to the World Health Organization, or WHO, there have been at least 2,457,386 adverse events worldwide. That's over a million more cases than all adverse events reported over the last 53 years of all vaccines administered since 1968 combined. This is a direct quote from your resource sheet number four, and it shows where to go to read the link from the CDC. Once again, I'm asking you to vote no on your employee COVID policy. As a taxpayer who voted you into these city council seats, I do not believe you should be insisting on policies that could harm your employees or cause them to leave employment because of your decisions. This could ultimately harm the city residents by creating shortages of staff for our fire department, ambulance, and police departments. None of you are licensed doctors, and were not elected to impose medical mandates on city employees. Please do not vote in a COVID policy at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Okay, that's the only two I have on public input. Is there anybody else that... Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion of the meeting. Okay, we'll get into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A is just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 16th, 2021. Item B, the minute meetings for the December 7th, 2021 city council meeting. Item C, the minute meetings for the December 7th, 2021 city council work session. Item D, Resolution 2597, adopting the 2022 tax levy and budget. Item E, approve a Goodyear County communication system subscriber agreement. Item F, approve a Minnesota water assistance program. Item G, Resolution 2598, Minnesota opioids state subdivision memorandum of agreement. And item H, Resolution 2599, authorizing budget transfers for the funding of the water tower restoration project. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Anybody? Otherwise, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Gesmi, a second by Montgomery, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business. Item A is the COVID policy update. Neil, you want to take that?
Two weeks ago, we had a work session in regards to what we're going to do based on the federal stay of the Fifth Circuit on the COVID mandate that the federal government has put on. Well, since our work session, it was sent to the 6th District, and they dissolved that, and now it's back on. So, we got an email today, in fact, this afternoon, from the League of Minnesota Cities that, you know, it'd probably best if I just read it to you. It's a couple paragraphs long, and it'll give you a better understanding of what's going on.
Sure.
So, "United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit dissolved the Fifth Circuit's stay of the COVID-19 vaccination and testing emergency temporary standard on December 17th." The ETS, which was published in the Federal Register on November 5th, requires employers with at least 100 employees, which is Cannon Falls, to mandate that employees get vaccinated against COVID-19, or mandate that employees get vaccinated, or submit to weekly testing and wear face coverings at work. As a state plan, Minnesota OSHA must adopt this standard as written or an equivalent standard that is as effective as the standard to protect workers in Minnesota. To meet these obligations, MinOSHA is preparing to adopt the ETS by reference as soon as January 3rd. The ETS will be effective immediately in Minnesota as of the date of its publication in the State Register. MinOSHA's state plan applies to all public and private employers in the state with limited exceptions. Federal OSHA maintains jurisdiction over federal employees working in Minnesota." Then it goes on to say some effective dates, but as soon as it becomes effective within Minnesota, as soon as MinOSHA approves it and publishes it in the register. So I talked to Sarah today, and I see she's up on the screen via Zoom, that what we're requesting tonight, based on the new information that we received today, is that council give staff the authority to start putting together a policy based on what MinOSHA is doing. And it looks like it's going to come quickly, so by January 4th, we should be able to have a draft policy to you in regards, you know, if you remember, Sarah showed or talked about three draft policies that she already had from other towns or counties. She'll put it together, and we'll get whatever we think is appropriate in there for you guys to review by January 4th. I know they're going to give us some extra timeline. It says here, "January 10th, and will not issue citations for noncompliance with standards testing requirements before February 9th." So we've got a month or so.
Okay.
To get this thing in place. If we continue down the road. And if I remember right, there's some pretty good stiff penalties associated with noncompliance. I mean, it's tens of thousands. I think it was $10,000 or $13,000. I don't remember the exact number, but... So if somebody turns the City of Cannon Falls in, and they come down and check, I guess we'll get a...
We're fine.
MinOSHA's pretty good at writing citations. So, that's where we stand. That's, as of 2:47 this afternoon, I got that email, and I knew MinOSHA had to adopt the federal guidelines either as strict or stricter. So, that's where we're at.
That would be my first question. Can we, as a council, go more strict? I know the federal one talks about testing every week if you don't want to get the shot. There's some medical exemptions potentially. I would rather see that we don't... Because people are going to game this and try and go the testing route if they don't want to get the shots. I want our people mandated to get it. And if you don't get it, you don't get to work here.
Yeah.
So I'd like that included in the policy we'll look at in January.
Is the thing... I was ready tonight to rescind our motion we made back in October and wait for something to happen while it happened today.
It happened, yeah, exactly.
Is the thing we pass in October just not sufficient enough to cover?
Is it not as...
What we need to do on the fourth?
It has to be at least as strict as OSHA, right?
What you passed in... passed in October, or whenever it was.
Whenever it was.
Was every two weeks, and this is every week, so it's not as restrictive. We gotta be... MinOSHA will send out their guidance, and that's what we'll have to follow. And they have the... they have to be as strict or stricter.
Okay.
Than the federal guidance.
Okay.
Here's what I'm going to say. I guess I was threatened with not getting voted for this fall by an emailer, but everybody's waiting for us to do something so they can go to their lawyers, or go to their unions, and be sue happy about, "We're going to sue you for this, we're going to sue you for that." If we follow OSHA's guidelines, I think we're going to be okay in that area. I mean, if that's what everybody agrees to, I don't see...
How they can sue us for following the government's...
Moving too far away from that, once... That's a pretty powerful department. So...
Sarah?
Well, I'm pretty sure the Supreme Court's going to hear this, too.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. Sarah? Hello?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We just can't see you, which might be your choice.
That is my choice. Yes, so, a couple of questions I heard. Yes, we can be more restrictive if the council wants to be. I wouldn't recommend it at this point, just based on the fact that we might get challenged, but that's certainly an option the council can choose to do. St. Paul has done that. They have flat-out mandated vaccinations, and they have been challenged, but that is what they are trying to do. MinOSHA, it sounds like their recommendations are going to be out very soon, and that they're not going to give us a lot of extra time. It also sounds like they're pretty much going to adopt the OSHA rules in whole by reference. So I don't expect anything significant to be different than what OSHA has already issued. What was the third question I thought I heard? Lawsuits? It is really hard to say. The fact is, we don't have a choice. The federal government has come out and said, "You must do this, and if you don't, OSHA is going to find you." Is it possible we will get sued? Certainly. Is it possible a union will challenge? Certainly. But being that we don't have... Your options are a possible lawsuit or OSHA fines at this point. Does that cover everything?
Yeah. Yes, I think so. I think that's what we're asking.
Just a point of clarification. I guess I misunderstood, because it was my understanding that we voted to create a policy, we didn't approve a policy, right?
That's right.
So this is confusing to me, because it's...
But that also wouldn't... According to the discussion, that also would be null and void, because it's not enough for the federal government as of January.
Right.
Right.
Right. It's...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
The working session was to create something which we didn't do.
This is exactly what we were hopefully delaying for.
Exactly.
Whether the federal government would mandate it, and whether it would succeed. And I heard somebody up here say that it might go to Supreme Court. Yeah, it probably will. It's already been submitted, I think, seven, six, seven major corporations have submitted. Doesn't mean they're going to pick it up. So, I think what we should do is at least get working on the policy. Get it done, and then see when this thing takes effect. And for the employees that do not want to get vaccinated, I asked Sarah today that, "Do we pay for the testing?" Yes. Do we pay for the time off to take it? Yes. Is it an inconvenience? Maybe a little. We're working on getting some of the tests so the ambulance can administer them, so it'll be really not out of their way, and not other... And we're trying to go to... We're going to try and make this as simple as possible. So, hopefully, this will go smooth, and hopefully, it won't last too terrible long. I'm hoping, so...
Is this part of us making a policy, but the logistics of the testing? Does it have to be rapid? Does it have to be the long format? Can it be done, you know, mail-in spit test through vault?
Better...
That's a better question for the screen.
And I don't know if we know that. Sarah, do you know that answer?
Our policy will need to cover that. I don't know the answer as to what we're going to require, but that will need to be part of the policy, is what counts as a test. And most of the talk I've been hearing is it's going to try and be sort of onsite employer testing, you know? So instead of saying, "Hey, send us something, it's going to be, you come here, we test, we get the results." But I don't absolutely know the answer to that yet. It will need to be in the policy.
Sarah, we can, though, elect to go even tougher, as I mentioned earlier, if we wish to.
Correct. If you wish to go tougher, you can just require, mandate just vaccinations. You still do have to allow for a medical or religious exemption.
Correct.
But you could go the either-or, or you can do the mandated vaccination.
And then, so that just talks about that the mandate has to be in place, and then it's up to our specific policy what the consequences would be? Or is that also in the ruling?
We're going to have to read it and see. There will be some questions that staff will have.
Right.
Simply because when the line in the sand comes, I want U7 to make that decision. You know, if it's dismissal, or you don't come back to work, or whatever that may be, if you don't want to do the testing. I don't know. You guys will put it in a policy, and you'll have to make that decision.
Yeah, I guess that's what my question was. Is that up to us?
Mm-hmm.
The consequences, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
I think so, yeah. I think that's part of it.
Well, that's not...
There must be some guidelines, because what's the point of a mandate if we don't have a consequence?
Right, right. There have to be consequences, yes.
Right. Because you... I mean, okay, well, I implemented a policy, but there's no consequences.
No.
I'm sure that you won't be okay with that.
No, there's something out there.
That's kind of why I'm against the testing portion, not only the cost, but the few employees we have, and this would also have to include our volunteers on committees. They're going to game the system, and work their way around it at our cost, and that's not right. Do it. Do it for... Do it for everybody. Yeah, you can laugh out there, Eric. When was the last time you were...
Me.
Okay. Same thing, but, yeah, when was the last time, Eric, you made an ambulance run? I believe it was before Walz put the mask mandate in place. You haven't worked in over a year in this town. Just bear that in mind.
Neither have you.
Now, you can be a smartass if you wish. Now, you can be a smart ass if you wish, but-
Let's move on here. Our hands are kind of tied on this, so-
What kind of direct, we just gotta direct staff to, or sir, or somebody-
To write a policy.
Put that policy together, but we'll do it.
Get started.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
We're gonna know more in a little while, but we'll get started, get a draft put together.
The threat of unions and lawsuits kind of pales in comparison to a government agency. They really know how, they're not just gonna come after this if OSHA shows up. I've had three federal agencies going after the bank at one time. It isn't fun.
And Neil, you said they're not gonna give us much time with Min OSHA if this takes effect? Like, what would the timeline, so what I'm understanding is, we should not necessarily, we don't have to take action, but we have to be ready so that when this does take effect, we've got a policy in place.
Correct. That's correct.
And I don't know when that is gonna hit. As it read here, this is the first time I, this is all evolving, right?
Today at 3 o'clock, basically.
Yes. And so, apparently when Min OSHA makes its guidance or its ruling, when it gets published, that's when it takes effect, is immediately. But they also said they're gonna give people some time. But there's also, I read in here, some deadlines.
So January 3rd to the first week of February, roundabout? That's our ballpark?
We're gonna find out here more in a little while, but what we're requesting is, let's get started. Let's get the policy in place.
Yeah.
So when the time comes, you guys can approve it, and we'll get a draft to you next meeting that says, "This is it, and if you like it, we'll," and in two weeks, you know what happened in two weeks prior to here. We don't know what's gonna happen two weeks from now.
We don't know.
Would you anticipate probably a work session for us, because we may want to adjust, you know, certain things within that policy?
Or do we just-
Could we just handle that at the council meeting, when you introduce it?
Yeah, and then if we need one, we can always do one.
Yeah. We'll get it put together.
Okay.
Do you need action from us to give you direction, or is that just-
A motion to direct staff to put this policy together.
I'll make a motion to direct the City Hall staff to work on our COVID policy before our next city council meeting.
Second of that?
I'll second.
Motion by Montgomery, second Lundell, to have staff put together a policy for our next council meeting. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Item B is Resolution 2600, authorizing the submission of an application, the Goodyear County Broadband Partnership Program. Laura, you wanna take that?
I will. Good evening. So, Goodyear County has put together a broadband partnership program in response to the American Rescue Plan Act. And with this, it is basically using, it's a grant opportunity for any service providers or cities, or townships, or whatever within Goodyear County to apply for some funds to go toward broadband expansion within the county. So, we have, in '22, we do have a water reconditioning project coming up, and with that, the water tower ring that's at the top is housing some communication equipment. Like, currently, we've got Verizon wirelesses up there, Northfield Wi-Fi is up there, but then Goodyear County also houses their emergency communication equipment up there. Well, that equipment will have to temporarily come down and be temporarily housed somewhere else on a, some type of temporary tower. But what we're asking in our application is to expand or reinforce that ring so that we can ask other providers, such as, you know, HBC, or there's Southeast Minnesota Wi-Fi, or there's LTD communication, or broadband communication, sorry if I screwed that up, to also become tenants on there with lease agreements, of course, with the city. But with that, with the application, it's about $85,000 in order to expand that ring, is what the estimated cost is for that. Well, the application, we have to have a 50-50 match. So, if we're asking for 42.5 from Goodyear County for the match, we also have to have, we have to come up with that, the other 50%. So, we had Commissioner Anderson reach out to the townships and ask them, with their ARPA funds that they have, if they would like to contribute toward that 50% match, because in the city limits, everyone has fiber to the home. They have that ability to connect, to have service right to their home if they want. So this would be able to expand that fixed wireless coverage out into our township areas. And we use the school district as kind of our territory, so that it would service the people, you know, our students in that area. But it's also a good way to kind of show that, that coverage area with topography in, you know, the six different townships that are outside of Cannon Falls. So, with that, excuse me, we reached out to, so our six townships are Cannon Falls Township, Stanton Township, Vasa Township, Leon, Warsaw, Belkirk, and also White Rock Township. And anyway, some of those townships have gotten back to me, and one has chosen not to participate in contributing, one has chosen, or has given verbal communicate, or verbal commitment, basically, thank you, Mary Jill, for finding the word for me, that they're going to contribute. Leon Township, I know, has their meeting tonight, and some of the others still have their meetings yet this year. So, I'm asking for a verbal commitment from them, hoping that we'll be able to find that 42.5 match in order to find the, that 50% match for this grant submission. If we don't get that match, then we either, A, don't submit, or, you know, we don't expand the ring, we just kind of shine up the one that we have, and we paint it, and then, there is equipment up there that I'm sure we'll find that is, you know, kind of dinosaur, you know, outdated, that probably isn't, you know, that will get removed, that won't go back up on the tower, so we will maybe have room for new providers. But basically, I'm asking for your permission to submit this application with the hope that we'll get this grant, we'll also get participation from the townships. If we don't get participation from the townships, then I guess it's a matter of coming back to council and asking if, you know, I mean, we can either turn down the grant from the county at that time, if we don't find that other participating match, or we choose not to expand the ring. So, I guess it's up to, you know, right now, I can submit it, and we just see how it turns out with the township contribution, or we just-
We're expanding this ring up on the tower to the benefit of the townships.
Well, absolutely. And that's just it. You know, the maps that I did provide to the townships showed the gaps in coverage. You know, it showed the current coverage area where, you know, fiber to home is right now, which is really just within the city limits. There are some areas out in Vasa, there was a grant that they did receive from Nuvera Communication that did actually connect some of the homes in that area, but it doesn't cover everyone. But this would be able to really reach in, and yes, it is for the benefit of the townships. That's why we're hoping that there is some contribution from them.
Didn't they want it out at Big Billsby Park?
Yes, and we do have letters of support, and, you know, in your packet, there were letters of support that we did receive. And I did reach out to, you know, some residents that, you know, are not very far outside of Cannon Falls. Some are, you know, one person that I reached out to is in the Vasa area, one person is not even two miles outside of the city limits, that doesn't receive any, you know, can't get, you know, can't get fiber to her home, and the Wi-Fi is, you know, not reliable. So, we're hoping that we'll get that participation from the townships. And with the ARPA funds, you know, it needs to be used on certain things for infrastructure, as far as sewer, water projects. Well, they don't have sewer, they don't have, you know, water, so broadband is-
This fits.
It fits that, and so I don't know what other projects that they have slated for their funds, but this would be a great opportunity to help service those residents. So, anyway, like I said, there's, this is that opportunity to do that, so.
There's definitely a void out there in Stan Township, in South and Cannon Falls Township. There's no broadband, and it would be a way to solve the problem, but it wouldn't be nice if the townships would contribute a little bit.
I was gonna ask, I see Cannon Falls Township has declined. Did they give a reason?
They didn't. They just chose, the response, I did include in your, in the packet, and just said they're choosing not to contribute, that they have other, they have other plans for their funds at this time.
Because they've got so many students, you know, so many that, oh my goodness.
So, and I guess my hope is that, you know, if someone from the township, I mean, if they come forward, you know, the thing is that I have to submit this application by June 3, or January 3 to the county. So, you know, I'm not sure when the award date would be, but if they were to come forward and we were able to say, "Hey, you know, they're interested in matching that," that would be fantastic. But at this time, I have to be able to submit the application with what I have in front of me.
Are we going to, say, are we going to ask, let's say, like, HBC, Southeast Minnesota Wi-Fi, and LTD, and the school, if they're gonna contribute? I mean, this is benefiting the school also.
Right. And, you know, and at this point, what I've done is just reached out to the townships first, because, I mean, they have the ARPA funds, you know, I mean, and that's where we kind of figured that, I don't want to call it free money, because, I mean, nothing is really free, but if they have, they have these funds that are allocated toward these types of projects, I mean, to help enhance this infrastructure. So that's why we thought that it was kind of a perfect project that they could contribute toward, that, again, it will be toward their benefit. But I can't force their hand in any way. So that's why, you know, I had a couple of conversations with Commissioner Anderson, hoping that he could, he started the conversation, you know, I helped explain it, provided the mapping and the coverage gaps for him, so that then I was the contact person that followed up with each of the township people to help explain and answer any of the questions that they may have had.
But I think it's nice to see Vasa Township, they said, "Yes, we got a problem, here's five grand."
Yep. And they even, you know, had, you know, and I talked to a couple of people in the Vasa Township, and they'd said, you know, "Is LTD participating, you know, as far as like, in, you know, their map coverage, are they going to be on the tower?" And I said, you know, we'd connected with them last year before we'd even really kind of gotten going on this project in 2020. And so it was a little premature as to like, what our timeline looked like or anything. And so I did connect with her, and I got her information, so it is also included in the packet. So, I mean, LTD is really important to the Vasa Township, because there are some of those residents, I know, that said that they have antennas on their silos, that, you know, if they can get that connection, you know, if they can ping off of our water tower, then that would really help service that area as well. So, yeah, I did reach out to as many providers as I possibly could. And that is one of the stipulations of the grant, too, is to, I had to send it out to and prove that I sent it out to the different providers, and if they chose not to respond back, I have to, I had to include that, that I sent it out, but if they chose not to respond, I have to include that. So, anyway, so I'm basically seeking your permission to submit the application. And then, like I said, if we end up not receiving the 50% match from the townships, or, like you said, I mean, from any of the other providers, or the school or something, then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But I'm just seeking your permission to submit the application tonight.
I'm gonna make that motion to go ahead and second that.
Okay, a motion by, gives me a second by Bill, Bill, to authorize the submission of application to Goodyear County Broadband Partnership Program. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, Laura, for doing all that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, reports. Kyle?
Good evening, council and community. I want to start off by saying that the chamber office will be closed, starting tomorrow morning, December 22nd, through Tuesday, December 28th. It will reopen on Wednesday, the 29th, at 8:30 a.m., and all voicemails and emails will be responded to at that time. I'm not only out of city, I'm out of state, so I'm going away. Light Up Cannon Falls turned out to be a very nice event for the community. In the decorations, we had 18 different residents turn in their applica, or turn in their addresses for us. But then I also expanded on the map to show other areas of the community that were lit up. And as I drive around, days after that, I'm seeing much, much more. And so it's been really fun to see what Cannon Falls is doing with all of their decorations. We did give out seven prizes, and they were $100, chamber dollars each. So that was, that was very good. One spouse told me that her husband had already gone out and bought more lights, and they didn't even have the money yet. So, that was pretty fun. The children's gifting tree, we ended up with 10 children's names, and thank you to Goodyear County Health and Human Services for helping us out with those names. And we also had plenty of public and chamber members that came in, took the tag off the tree, went out and bought gifts, and it was just astounding, the amount of gifts that were in my office. And so, there's gonna be some very happy families for Christmas. So that's wonderful. The scavenger hunt, clues, anywhere from 2,500, or 250, excuse me, 250 to 500 hits on each clue. And we did have four answer sheets turned in, which is actually, let me see, we had one turn, one and a half turned in last year. The half is because it wasn't fleet, completely. And this year, we had four. And so that's always interesting to me, as to, they're looking at it on Facebook and Instagram, out on the web, but just not turning in that answer sheet. And so, something we did this year, because one of the clues was in regards to a snowflake not being in line. And there were actually two answers.
Really?
Really.
Or was the other one?
Well, the one was on top of the Christmas tree.
Oh.
And then, if you look at HBC's front window, they have a great big snowflake.
Then there's three.
Oh. Well, the third one.
One Danny put up. It's on the, it's on the south side of Mill Street.
What's to be done? Oh my gosh.
South side of Mill Street.
Way too much.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Our map, online, both Facebook, Instagram, and on the web, we've had over 1,400 hits. So people really took a hold of that map. I'm hoping we're seeing more traffic around, and that helps our community as well. And, actually, that, we do have a big event. The Community Military Care Package Event is starting in January. And so there's individual packaging, and there's also a packaging event where people are getting together at the American Legion. And so that is on January 29th. So I'll be watching for that. Okay? Any other questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Happy holidays, and I'll see you next week.
Have a good vacation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Library board, Mary Jill.
Yep. Nicole was going to report, but they didn't have a library board meeting this month, so she just asked me to talk about a few of the programs they had going on. The Noon Year's Eve program they're going to have is filled now. The New Year's Eve program they're going to have is filled now, so there are no more spots, but there's still room in the Polar Express Storytime, Steve, so you can still sign up for that. The library will be closed Christmas Eve and Christmas, and New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, and there is still room, Derek, for you in the crochet class on January 3rd. It's for intermediate to advanced crocheters, so. They don't want me, that's for sure. So there is still room in that, you can look on the website, it's going to either be, you can either take it on your own, on your own time, or you can be in a Zoom class, I believe, at the, so that's kind of what she had for me.
Okay, let's go around. Dan, anything you got there?
Yeah, just one thing, the new raw wastewater pump has been installed, it's been in service for almost a week now, and the volume that that new pump pumps really shows how worn the other three are, so.
Oops.
Hasn't been a need, knock on wood, to pull a pump.
Hey, Laura?
At our EDA meeting earlier this month, we did start our strategic planning for 2022, so we did extend our meeting, we had a couple hours and really had some good momentum, good conversation. Actually, we're going to continue it at our January meeting, so I think we've got some good ideas, and we've got, like I said, some good enthusiasm, and we're excited for '22 and what it can bring, so stay tuned.
Sounds good. Tyler, you got anything? Neil?
Just one item. We had a radiant heater furnace breakdown, and it's, cannot be fixed, so it's the building that houses our hydro vac and our, our vac truck, and it's got water, so just an FYI, we've got to get it fixed, and we're going to get a new one, we'll get a couple bids, we'll take the, the cheapest one, and, and it'll be around $3,000, $4,000. It's not out of the world, like $30,000, but we still have to get heat in that building, so you'll probably see it at the next accounts payable, but it's something that I have to get done. That's it.
Okay. Okay, council, Laura, anything? Matt?
You know, I've, I've thought about, sometimes there are issues that you just don't want to bring up because it gives oxygen to the argument, and I think everybody in the community who's a registered voter got something in the mail the other day, and it has a lot of people fired up and regarding the referendum that's coming up for the school. And I'm not going to go bullet point by bullet point disproving the claims that these people made or talking them down. I'd actually invite whoever did that to step forward and have a discussion. The number one point that they said is that they're not being heard. How is anybody supposed to have a discussion with a ghost who basically makes claims, causes dissension and disruption to the entire process and can never be held accountable? Gets people worked up, and I think that it's a distraction. I think that as a community, you know, the school board is a separate entity, but the school is an important part of our community. And here at City Hall and on the city council, we are looking at the entire community, and the school is a huge part of that. So I'm going to try in these next couple of months to do my part to just create some positivity, and I think the, I invite whoever did that to come forward and have a discussion and sit down, because I understand, they can be people who are frustrated and disappointed in the district for certain things, but that mailer had absolutely nothing to do with the issues that are on the referendum about technology, the HVAC system, the improvement of the CTE classrooms, the staffing, the, the proposed cuts if it fails. That mailer had nothing to do with any item that faces our community right now. So we're stuck with, we can sit here and be distracted and argue with a ghost, or we can keep our eye on the, the task at hand and stay focused on that referendum and try to create some positivity and some information. We want people to be informed, we want people to make that decision, because we understand it is our taxpayers making that decision. But our school is a vital part of the community, and I fear that these distractions will continue, and I fear that unless people step forward and we have this discussion, that we can move to make progress. Otherwise, it's just going to be squabbling. So, that's all I got. Oh, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Bill?
As with Matt, you know, wish you Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and for everybody, I strongly urge everybody that hasn't got a COVID shot to get one. That's it.
Derek?
I just want to wish. Just want to wish everyone a, like, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and next year can't be any worse, right?
Mary Jill.
Well, I could make it worse by starting to sing right now, but I'm not going to do that. Yes, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that. And like you, Matt, sometimes you just can't let it go. I was okay until COVID vaccine mandates got compared to the Nuremberg Trials. Nuremberg Trials, really? That's kind of like comparing the common cold to stage four cancer. You know, yeah, might be bad, but the Nuremberg Trials, really, I'll let everyone Google that and find out what that was about. So that's it.
Steve?
First of all, Tyler.
Wake up.
I'll wait for him to wake up. I've had people talk to me and a few people on the social media sites saying there's a lot of people that don't know what those big red octagon things are on certain streets.
STO P on them?
And I'm just wondering if you've had a lot of complaints from, from community members at the police department calling and.
I don't even know what octagon things are.
Stop signs?
Stop signs.
It was, it is, it is.
Well, actually, it's a six-sided octagon. No, it's.
Six, I don't know what it is.
That's a different joke.
Whatever stop, we haven't had a lot of plates lately that I've heard of, but, you know, we do, we do, you know, in the mornings, we do hang out around the school area, and then we do in the afternoon, your closing, your, you know, release time, so they're trying to kind of combat that and just be seen out there, so.
I could have made you a few hundred the other day. I was sitting out in front of Chicago Ed's waiting for someone.
And it's hard when you're a marked.
On the four, that four-way stop was just like, it's like a four-way suggestion, you know?
And, are you done?
Yes, I'm done, sorry.
On a personal note, I have a friend in Texas, one of my many critics, and I just want to say to Jim that we're all thinking of you, we heard the weather tonight's going to be down in the low 40s, we hope you survive that and get into a high of around 80 for Christmas, so I just, I hope you'll be okay down there. Merry Christmas to everybody.
There are no meetings scheduled before we have our next council meeting, so no, nothing to bring up there, but again, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2022. Motion adjourned? Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.